Good Lord, our cell store, the wise care wants to stay. Just sign up if you want to be sent to the Lord of Prayer and we'll have the flag in reach.
Lord, it's me once again, Hannah before then. I came here for this day for the blessings that you just started on us. Bless this meeting tonight, bless each day it's said and done. They do what they're done and listen soon and all that. Forgive us of all, how many failures and what happens with how many they are. We ask of these papers in my name for thy sake.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, the one which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call. Councilman Fletcher. Councilman Dick.
Here.
Councilman Sun.
Here.
Councilman Wood.
Here.
Councilman Deb. Mayor Fletcher.
Here.
Senator Sun. We're going to separate you all or we'll dump that one. Alrighty, approval of the minutes from April sixteenth. You've got those in your pocket. Melanie, you already found a few things or what?
I found on page three. Mayor Fletcher mentioned that the Easter egg. And page two, the departmental school softball donation request. Motion was made by Councilman Fletcher, I went here.
Anything else from anybody? If not, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion with the few corrections that they be approved. So now put that in motion.
Certainly.
Somebody by Jacob, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Michael. All those in favor, say five, say nine. Any opposed like so? Alright, where's Karen? Alright, next thing we got is the April twenty-four financial statement. John?
If you want to take a look at the income for the month, we had an income of a hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Our expenditures for the month of April was sixty-two thousand, two ninety-five, ninety-four, leaving us a surplus, uh, forty-six thousand, four hundred fifty dollars and fifty-six cents. Uh, most of the income was made up of being no taxes, uh, from Boyd. Um, Boyd. Company?
Caterpillar.
Caterpillar, uh, twenty-one thousand dollars. Mountain air gas, uh, eighty-seven hundred, West Virginia water, fifty-four hundred, and a few more that's later on in your page as well. Um, expenditures really, there really wasn't much on the ordinary of running the town, um. We did put tires on both vehicles. But other than that, everything else is pretty much, um. Brand line was what we pay every month, so.
Alright, have any questions for the financials? None for me. If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the financial statements. That's it. Okay, emotional Melanie, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Nicole, all those in favor, say five, say nine. Any opposed like so? So.
I will say that we are still getting some municipal fund themes rolling in, um, we did push some more liens on some properties. You see the notification from a best title agency, this one's Dory's house. Um, and there's an outstanding lien of around nine thousand on that, so we're looking at hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we should see that come in as well also.
Alrighty. Uh, with that then, the next thing on the agenda is under old business update on town festival. Nicole or Melanie or Melanie and Nicole?
Um, we've got nineteen vendors so far signed up. Nobody's paid yet, but we had to send the forms out to them. Um, everybody seems excited and I don't think there's much going on in September, so I think that'll, will do well.
Okay.
Other than that, um. Nicole's going to take care of the car part of it and, uh. Got a couple of things on that or anything. We're just getting ready to send the letters, or take the letters around for donations. And, uh. You're still taking care of the bands, right? And we got the DJ taking care of Jacob or John, or Tyler or?
Yeah, who'll take care of it.
Somebody will take care of that, so we've got that taken care of. You know, we'll probably have a meeting next week sometime, um, for the town fair, just to kind of get things together and see what all we got to work with. We haven't set a date yet, but I'll put it out on the.
Yes, I mean, I'll post it.
Okay.
Alrighty. Anything yet? Alright.
Um, what did Mark say? Mark mentioned something about.
People think Mr. Mr. Blue.
Yeah, there was something else about the festival.
Oh, it's about the donation order.
About getting him the donation order, okay, yeah. And he would start handing those out.
Yeah, he's wanting to get those passed out. Oh, and I need to, I need to ask a question. In the past, we've had the fifty-fifty, are we doing the fifty-fifty this year? Cause I know there was some talk about it last year, so.
Are those, are we can?
Okay. Cause that's one thing I told you earlier.
Alrighty, under new business stand, last day for open gym and, uh, the Bell Elementary graduation and awards day is, uh, twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth. I know tomorrow they're setting up, uh, and then the grade school will be in here Thursday morning and Friday. So we've got that to get set up, so the guys will do all of that. And then from there, we'll try out our new P A system in there, so. Uh, so we have that set up tomorrow, we get that ready to go. And last day for open gym.
Today.
Today.
Today, right, okay.
And, uh. So it was finished as of today. Alrighty, anything else? Anybody need to say about any of that? If not, the next thing on there is the A R P funds, uh, purchased excavator and trailer. And action is needed there and so I had Adam go out and actually get bids and everything when they excavated. And, uh, pricing is as follows. Uh, Caterpillar bid sixty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. Bobcat bid fifty thousand, two sixty-seven point seventy-five. And Kubota bid fifty thousand, seven hundred dollars. Bobcat did give us a five thousand dollar governmental credit. None of the other two put anything on there like that. Uh, but, uh, so it looks like their bid may have been fifty-five, but they did give us the credit. I will say that the, the other towns around us, Lormed and now Glasgow is buying a Kubota machine. Uh, Lormed's already bought one. We've actually used it over here and they do have a jackhammer for it. And I didn't, I told Adam for now, don't, don't price a jackhammer because we needed one if we bought the Kubota, you know, they said we could use theirs. Uh, but, you know, it's about four hundred dollars more. We don't have to take the low bid, but, you know, I'm just going to point that out. Trailers, let me give you some trailer bids. Uh, Boyd Caterpillar bid an Econoline trailer. Uh, thing is, it must be leftover, it's a two thousand twenty-two model. It's eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars. Ogden Enterprise, uh, and these are all fourteen thousand G V W trailers, is seven thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. State equipment is seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Tri-County trailers, uh, out of Big Trolls there, bid two trailers, one of them was a Suretrack. It's seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And the Big Tex trailer out there is seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars. So I guess let's, uh, start with the excavator, what's everybody's opinion or whatever there?
Are they all the same size basically?
Same size, digging, they've all got thumbs on them, so they can pick stuff up with them. Uh, they've got blades on the front of them, so they can push all the dirt back into holes. Uh, they do dig right at eleven foot. Uh, um, all of them are what they call twenty-five horsepower, they're about twenty-four point eight horsepower. Um. You know, and, and most of them's got two-year warranties on the, on the equipment. But I think it's pretty much, you know. Again, you know, we, we did this based upon the Kubota, you know, looking at what Lormed had and what Glasgow just ordered, they ordered the same thing. And Adam got is the very exact same thing too.
And if we get the Kubota, it'll fit on any of the trailers that we have built.
Yeah. Yeah, any of these trailers will work with either one of the three machines. The only other thing would be, you know, if not sooner or later, we may buy a, have to buy a jackhammer if we'd ever have to have one. It is what they call a high pressurized unit, so it will go on the jackhammer right off of the, of the, uh, horn itself.
So we wouldn't have to do anything?
Yeah, we'll have to do a thing to, to drop the bucket off there and add the, the jackhammer to it and, and go with it, so.
My thoughts are if we can use Lormed's jackhammer if we need to, and we don't have to buy one of those right now, that's saving us some money.
Yep. And I think Adam told me that jackhammer was six thousand dollars.
I'm sure.
Yeah, I think the Kubota's a good choice then, since it's what the other neighboring towns have and we can use their attachments.
They have good records too, you know, from the past.
Uh, Lormed's we've had over in town, we've actually had to use it, uh, before. This, this Terramite we've got, it's, it's about shot. We put the new motor on a terawatt here and that, and, uh, but, you know, pistons keep wearing out on it and everything else. It's just an old, old machine. The last time we, you know, we had to, uh, have the bucket and everything fixed, they used actually my machine. And, uh, so, so I donated the machine to the town a couple of days.
And they just said they basically welded together the bucket and.
Now, two-year, is that like warranty and parts, I mean, like parts neighbor or?
That's pretty much warranty and parts, yeah. Yeah, old machines, so. And, and Lormed didn't say anything about, you know, leaving any work, or having any work done on it, I think everything's been good. They keep serviced it and everything, which you're going to have to hit in the machines, so.
Somebody want to add? Put that in the motion?
Somebody want to put that in the form of a motion that we purchase the Kubota then?
I could.
You go ahead.
I can put in a motion.
Okay, got emotional Melanie that will purchase the Kubota machine, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jacob. All those in favor or any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say five, say nine. Any opposed like so? So, or trailers, uh. The most expensive is the Boyd Caterpillar one, uh, the least expensive is Tri-County. And, you know, Tri-County's got a couple of bids right there within what, a hundred and thirty dollars or? And then the next one is really about, uh, seven hundred, eight hundred dollars more. And then the Ogden is, you know, seventy-four hundred dollars.
What's the, I mean, is there that much of a difference in the trailers in terms of the prices? I know the prices are, but as far as the trailers, what they can do or, you know, just top things, right?
Well, some of them are, you know, ramps and whether or not they've got a tail on them and things like that.
Okay.
You mentioned Tri-County's got a big trucks.
Big, big Tex.
Trucks?
Yep.
Is there any difference in?
Uh, no, it's just another kind of a truck.
Okay, okay.
The Suretech, uh, Suretrack that they sell, uh, I actually own one myself, it's that aluminum trailer I've got. It is a Suretrack, but they build equipment trailers and, uh, and, you know, that's what these Big Tex and Suretracks.
And we have a Big Tech, that black one you see at our shop, that black trailer.
Oh, okay, that's a Big Tex, okay. Yep. But they, uh, I mean, they're, they're all good trailers, I don't think any of them's bad.
I like that they're local.
Well, if we go local, then we, you know, we'd either go Boyd or we'd go State or Tri-County, you know, it's the three closest. But what's the pleasure? I mean, we, we got to have one.
Yeah, if they're all relatively the same, then.
It's, it's not like the Terramite where we can just travel all around town, this is a rubber tire machine and, you know, go travel all around town without a trailer.
And my question is, I mean, you know, if the trailers are pretty much alike and do the same purpose, go with the cheaper one. I mean, that's my opinion, but, I mean, I don't know if there's that much of a difference in the names or?
Yeah, the Suretrick and the Big Tex, is there really any difference in those two?
Oh, I think, uh, you know, the, uh.
Do they have different sized wheels?
Uh, no, I think they were the same wheels, I think, and I would have. The Suretrack and the, um, Big Tex are all equipment hauler trailers, got equipment trailers. They are fourteen thousand rated pounds, uh, for the, uh, uh, the trailer itself. They both have two thirty-five by eighty by R sixteen's, uh, spare tires, which is what the tire's going to be on the trailer itself. So it's just different brands. Like I said, one of them, the, the two real differences, because the D M V and the spare tires are the same. The Suretrack is six thousand eight seventy-five and the, uh, Big Tex is six thousand nine ninety-nine. So it's a hundred and twenty bucks difference, the Big Tex. Same tires, same poundings, G V W and haul and all that.
I just made a motion, we give Suretrick for Tri-County, he said seven thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars.
Okay. You got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Michael. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say five, say nine.
Okay.
Any opposed like so? So. And we will remove that from the A R P funds, so. So this will be kind of a joint venture with us and the sanitary board, so the sanitary board would, would actually have the use of the, uh, equipment and everything. That was how we posted that there before, so. Alrighty, approval of invoices, anything?
No.
Nothing? Personnel issues, uh, uh, we do have an executive session set up, uh, I've got a few things, personnel issue that I'll bring up there and, uh, so we'll move on. Uh, police department report is there.
I hear our buddy's out. Our buddy's out.
He is. I'll, I'll tell you a little bit more about that here, so. Just, just for everyone's information, I know a couple of people in this room know it, uh, I did file the mental health petition against him, Mr. Matt. And, uh, he went to Highland Hospital, he could stay there twenty days, yesterday was his twentieth day, they released him, sent him home.
Do we know anything as far as, I mean, medication or anything?
Yeah, they did put him on some medication, uh, is he still taking it today? Uh, seriously, not. But, um, I had a discussion with, um, A P S yesterday. Uh, I did file an order last Monday to get a guardianship appointed for him. Uh, and, uh, the Canal County Sheriff and the D H H R is working on that right now, so.
So that's.
And actually Mike walked by the house yesterday, I had him come in and sit down on the porch. I had a little, I'll say come to Jesus meeting or whatever with him and, uh, talked to him for about thirty minutes. He, I think he got a little mad and got up to go. And, uh, I don't think he liked it, you know, what I did, but I said, Mike, you need some help, he even said he needs some help. In the hearing that, um, they swore me in, deposed testimony, the whole works, myself and the psychologist. Psychologist called me back and said, he does need to go to a.
At least they can see that.
Yeah, but the thing is, with that mental health petition, they can only keep him for twenty days. Uh, the A P S worker wanted to know his mother's phone number, I did give her that yesterday. She's going to talk to her, but I said, from what I understand, mother doesn't want anything to do with it. I told Mike, I said, Mike, we need to board up your house, we need to get the rest of this stuff out from around your house, we need to pick it up. You know, I said, right now, a kid could walk up there, you're leaving your door open and everything else, kid could walk up there and get cut right now on all those windows that are broken and everything else. He went in the garage yesterday, broke some more windows in the garage. So it, it's starting all over again.
Well, evidently he's not eating very well, cause he's coming up to the school and getting, I've, I've had some neighbors down there call me and say he's down here. Like, hey, as long as there's food in there, if he's not doing anything, let him have the food, you know?
At the grade school? I don't know.
There was a food box up there.
Oh, yeah, it boxed, yeah.
Horse guts, yeah.
Yeah.
Out front, yeah. So I don't know, it's, uh, it's, it's not better, it's not cured, he told me he wanted to go back to Massachusetts. You know, now it's just whether or not, you know, how we work that out to get him better. Uh, I've got a couple of ideas, but I won't share them right now. I think y'all know that, but, but, um, you know, so, um, you know, he, he definitely still needs some help. He says he'd like to just get out of here and take off and go back to Massachusetts. They did sell the property, uh, two, three weeks ago. Uh, the original owner, before he owned it, they actually sold it in, in that guy's name. And then he hasn't paid his taxes, so I'm sure it's going to be sold again, uh, but, um.
So, so Michael does not own that house now?
Well, no, no, somebody's got a lien, you got one year, you got one year, you know, to get back.
Right, that's correct. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But, um, the, the, yeah, I know that before, he is aware of it, uh, I did make his parents aware of it. Uh, but, uh, you know, I don't know if they'll try to redeem it or whether or not, when he bought it, whether or not the attorney didn't, didn't pay the, the taxes on it that year. I don't know why. But, uh, it, it's, it's not good.
Did they not judgmental, the guy that was up here last time, that said that they may be able to go and talk to him and maybe help him, I mean? Did you think he'd come back?
I don't think we, we've heard from him and then what did you tell me about those guys?
Um, yeah, as far as the, the mural, which we, we had.
Oh, yeah, the paint.
Already and, and then the guy that was going to do it is actually leading the program. So we were all ready to go, I, I would have presentations if, if he was going to stay, but. So my thinking is, because it's such a fluid program, it's probably not a good idea to use them for anything that might take a little while, that might need a council approval or something like that, you know?
Yeah, but I was talking about, he said he might be able to go by and visit Mike and.
I, I don't know that that ever got done because after the last meetings, when I actually said, hey, we need to do something with him. And so I started calling and, uh. Actually ended up, uh, you know, then going down there and, uh. Jennifer Bailey had actually helped me out with the hearing examiner a little bit and, uh. So then I ended up, I even reached out to her and she said, Mr. Fletcher, I'm going to stop you right now. I can't talk to you about this, cause I'm the one that's got a ear. And I said, I understand that and, uh, so I ended up, uh. You then talked to the psychologist, psychologist did go behind scene and after they picked him up that day, they took him down, they did a full evaluation on him. She calls me back, she said, he definitely needs to be in hospice. And, uh, so then I had to wait till later on, they called me about three-thirty and said, hey, we're ready to start this hearing. And I said, well, not here right now, you have to give me about ten minutes to get back to my home, so I can log up my Zoom and get it ready and, and come up on the screen. So I did that and got back and then heck, it was another twenty minutes for the sheriff to join us, uh, the hearing examiner. So then, uh. He was sitting there and I actually took papers that Lynn, Kelly, and Glenn had written. Uh, I filled out the mental health evaluation, put stuff on it. And, you know, and he was sitting there, clamping his head on the desk and everything, just going to do those papers. And, uh, and he said, well, he said, I guess the, he's holding these papers up, he said, well, I guess the court's like me. And he said, well, I guess the mayor likes me. And then he said, well, I, I think the police chief likes me too. And, uh, so everybody kind of got a giggle out of that, you know, and we were like, well, you know, at least he can read it, you know, and knows what it's saying. And, uh, and like I said yesterday, I just called him, come down the street and I said, Mike, what's going on, I'll watch that a few minutes. I told him what I was doing, told him I was working on the, uh, conservatorship or guardianship. And, uh, and all the time, he's sitting there with a vape, just vaping oil. And, uh, so I guess they bought him a vape or something before he left the hospital. I don't know, but, uh, he's still in his socks, yesterday evening, he was in his, uh, just bare feet. Uh, he, I guess all day today, he slept on the porch over there in a sleeping bag or a couple of blankets or something and, uh.
Yeah.
Probably ran the streets last night, you know? But, uh, I, I don't know, and he said his buddy down by street was gone and I think his wife's in hospice or something, so I'm sure he was there. And so he couldn't get down to see him, so. So I don't know, probably sat up over there all night just thinking about, hey, what's, what's Fletcher going to do to me tomorrow? But I'm, I'm trying my best because, you know, I'm, I'm a firm believer, if we don't get that house boarded up or whatever, we'll go have some kids hurt or something, somebody's going to get in there sooner or later. But that's kind of what I'm afraid of, so. But anyway, uh. Yeah. They have anything else on the police report? No, nothing for you. Does anybody see anything else? Okay. If not, then what we'll do, we will, uh, go ahead and move forward and, uh, so we'll take that and that's, that's done. Items from the mayor and I'm going to, uh, just, uh, throw one more thing out here, a couple of things actually. One thing is, is, uh, a year and a half, two years ago.
Do we say?
Yeah. A year and a half or so ago, we, uh, we were looking at signs and, uh, we ended up, uh, chose Osborne Associates to get our signs from. Uh, they're in, is a whole list of signs. Uh, therein is a whole list of signs that Adam had come to me with and, uh, uh, to, uh, order again. Uh, this order for Osborne Signs and, uh, uh, is two thousand, two sixty-seven, fifty-one.
What did you say, signs? Do you know, street signs, like a stop sign?
Yeah, yeah, street signs, stop sign. Two thousand, two sixty-seven, fifty-one. Who was it?
Think we're done gone.
Oh. I think somebody come in for a ticket. I missed one.
Yep.
What'd you say the company was? Osborne?
Osborne Associates are over in Ohio. And we had used them before. And, uh, when we actually bid signs before, they came in a lot cheaper than anybody else, so. But, uh, these are signs that Adam, uh, been talking to me now for probably over a month. And, uh, and he's called back and had him redo signs a couple of times with, you know, street signs.
Yeah.
And everything and then, uh, dead end, city vehicles, fishing pier closing, slow, children playing, no swimming, things like that for fishing pier, items like that. And then Fifth Street, Sixth Street, signs and everything else. So throw that out there just to, to get a authorization to let him go ahead and, and order these signs from Osborne Associates.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for that.
Okay. Got a motion for Jacob. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second on Nicole. Any questions or anything? If not, all in favor, say five, say aye. Any opposed, like a say? The next thing is actually, we had, uh, Thrasher Engineering in here today. And Thrasher is our new, um, engineering company. And they did a, uh, uh, right now, a, uh, P E R report. And actually also an I and I report, which is, uh, all the inf- in- infiltration and everything for the sewage system and the storm system. And the, uh, P E R's preliminary engineering report. And, uh, these are two of the, uh, books that they brought us today for us to sign. Ray, they're sending me these electronically and then we'll send them to you just to look over, make sure everything looks good.
Okay.
I told them we, we did not have these on the agenda, so. Told them we couldn't do anything today, but we'll either maybe hold a special meeting or whatever. And they're supposed to send me electronic version. They hadn't done it yet today, so probably tomorrow or something.
All right.
But I'll get it and I'll send it on to you just for your review and everything. Uh, they did say the, the per, uh, is actually estimated right now, thirty-five thousand dollars. And the I and I, which would either be camera work or slope testing through town. Uh, right now, we are still just looking at the lower end. Uh, you know, from, uh, Fourth Street or the bank area all the way to the creek. So, uh, finishing up that area so that we can just start moving up this way. Uh, but that's thirty-five thousand and the I and I is twenty-five thousand. And they will actually not even bill us until we're able to at least apply for our grant. And so hopefully that grant then will actually pay for those services and fees. And they asked us today, how much grant you want? How much would, do you all want to put into it? We're right now holding that. We want to try to do everything we can as a grant, so. What was that, Shannon, three weeks ago, two weeks ago, the governor came up? Three weeks ago now?
I can't remember. I think so.
But, but he, uh, they gave some money to East Bank that day down there along with the, uh, the project for the trails around the mountain, Hollylawn or whatever, but, uh, yeah, the Mary Ingalls Trail System or, uh, so, you know, but they also.
Is that where East Bank, that twelve minute?
Yeah, yeah. So they got, and they got like a million dollars out of town. So I know where, where I'll go first. And, uh, so anyway, uh, you know, if we can, we'll, we'll probably do this in increments. It may be, you know, two million to five million. And, uh, so we'll do our best to see if we can find over five million dollars to, to do these projects. To finish that up, so. Wanted to let you all know that, so that, that did come in today. So we've got this actually, you know, ready to move forward and get everything moving on the, uh, on that project, so. So hopefully we can get started there. Uh, I think that's all I've got. I've got, like I said, some other things that we'll talk about in executive session. Ray, anything?
No, not this one.
Okay. Items for council. Mike, uh, Dave, Nicole?
Um, I don't have anything, but Mark sent us a message.
Yes.
That he wanted to make sure, uh, that we thanked, uh, Ms. Blue and the crew.
And the crew.
And the crew from outreach for their work they did on kicking off our beautification projects around the town. It looked good. Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Charlie, thank you. And, uh, and I know you said you had a few flowers or something. And I don't know if there's other places we need some more flowers.
We just talked to Mina last night, so, uh, she wouldn't need any.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I found some more in my car and I gave it back to Adam. Adam said he'll find, he'll find spots for them, so.
Okay, all right. I don't even know, did we put any over late for the post office or anything?
I don't know.
We used to do some stuff out front of the post office.
Oh, I, I did not check there.
And you, y'all might, y'all might look at that and see if there's any, any of there. Yeah, uh, maybe we can put something over there, you know?
I think that, um, can I say?
Huh?
Can I say something?
Yeah.
All right, um, I think in front of the City of Hope, there used to be a flower box there, but it's all messed up. And it looks nasty looking. Wonder if you can do something to take that out there or?
Wait, on their property?
Is it on their property? It is?
Well, it's on that building property.
Yeah.
But when you drive by, it's just all piled up. It's falling apart.
It's gonna be fixed or just is it, uh, I don't think.
I think it needs to be fixed.
Just need to move it out of there.
Needs to be moved out?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I think it would look better if the front of it, if that was gone.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, we can talk to the preacher there and see what he says. Maybe I'll get Adam and then just go by there and pull that out of there. But anywhere else that you all see or want to do anything else, feel free, you know? If you need something else, let us know.
I just drove by and seen that and thought it needs to come out there.
Yeah.
Speaking of, like, on the beautification thing, we need to have another underpass cleaned up because it's trashy.
Yeah.
Especially now that it's cut.
I thought there's guys wanna clean it.
Yeah, I don't know. I've got that, that one boy's number from the.
Yeah, they were keeping it cleaned. Watched it here. They were.
I'll ask them. They can, they can send them down there.
The same one, you know, the same ones might not be there.
Yeah, yeah. They probably get, get somebody down there.
Yeah.
So we'll do that. Anything else? Vallee, anything else?
Um, Friday night was the band. We didn't do as well as we thought we would, but we did pretty good. Um, Shirley, you still doing pretty good on Friday nights? Food was, okay. Uh, everybody seems to like it. I don't know what it's gonna come down to. We only had seventy this past time. We had a hundred and eight the last time. So I don't know when summer comes on, if, you know, the ball games and all that stuff will take away from it or not, but just kind of play that back year. And then, uh, like I said, we're starting to work on the festival. Hopefully we'll be able to get more vendors and everything. Play team's not too bad really. I mean, they're fairly good vendors, so I just gotta get some more food vendors and stuff, but. We're gonna, we're working on that this week and call some more people this week.
Okay. John, anything? Nothing? All right, approval for visitors to address council?
Oh, Dave, I'm sorry. I'll fix that then. Are we gonna have a street shower this year?
Yeah, probably should.
Do it until county comes and talks.
Yeah. Water, water.
The water company, that's what I was saying.
We probably just need, you know, for us to get everything, I can get Adam set it up. You know, after school's out and then we'll, uh, we'll probably have to do what we did before. You know, some of us go out there and run it, you know, do that.
Do we still want to keep it on Monday or?
It, it doesn't matter. Just pick a day.
I think I like switching the days up because I think it kind of helped, like, kids get here different days.
Yeah.
Yeah, because Mondays aren't always good for everybody. I think when we switched it a little bit.
Yeah, because one time we had it on Thursday, one time we had it on Monday.
Well, you all choose.
No, Wednesday because of church.
Yeah, Wednesday's probably not good.
Okay, so we'll just bring that back next time because school's out.
Okay.
Tuesday.
Yeah. Yeah, we probably need to figure out what we're gonna do during the next two to three weeks.
Yeah.
Early. And, uh, and move from there. So you all just decide here.
I mean, I worked every Monday and all these days, so I'll probably be out on Mondays.
About Thursday. The power department has something on Thursday, don't they?
Yeah, it's our meeting on.
Tuesday? They don't leave as much. You work Tuesday nights, too.
We just can't do council anyways.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Thursday's in.
Yeah, I don't have any restrictions, so.
When do we want to start it? Let's just start with that.
Yeah, let's, this weekend, if a date we can.
The first full week of June, that way, because school lets out. Is it, is it Tuesday or?
Yeah.
Yeah, teachers.
School's out Tuesday and June's next week.
Yeah.
They're a week away. Two weeks from now.
So have it like, uh?
So start on June the fourth?
What's, what they say?
It's a Tuesday.
In two weeks.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody?
That would be great.
June the fourth, at what time? Six?
Six is what they normally do.
I think we had six.
Six what? Is six what you normally do?
I think that's what we did.
Six to what?
I say we did thirty minutes last time.
Thirty minutes, yeah. I'll tell the lady.
Yeah, we did six to six-thirty.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll tell the girls, they can put it in the, uh, buildings and everything. And start June the fourth. And I'll have Adam and them get it out and.
I'm done, sorry.
Get it out and get it ready.
I had it written down in front of my face.
All right, need a motion for visitors to address council?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Nicole, we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Vallee, all, any? Any discussion? If not, I'll leave a favor, say a five, say a aye. Any opposed, like a say? Anybody have you there?
I'm just wondering, have you heard anything more about where they're supposed to start tearing down the, the left of it?
I don't know. You know, you got, uh, the big job down there at the Macy's Building.
Yeah.
And, uh, he's got, I think, just about four or five pieces of equipment down there and everything, yeah. So it's hard to tell. And then, you know, I keep hearing that they're probably gonna tear the municipality down, so.
Yeah, I know. I hate that.
And he will probably end up with that job.
Yeah.
I'm sure that pays a little bit more.
Oh, I'm sure it does. I'm sure it does.
I just hate to see the municipality go.
He's got a bunch already tore down. He just needs to haul off.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But, uh, so I don't know. Yeah, you know, when the.
Yeah, we're definitely not, not priority.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else?
I do. A couple of residences asked me to address the permit issue with them. Because they are getting, they feel like they are getting harassed and threatened.
Permit for what?
For anything. There's somebody that got, was asked to get a permit, getting their carpets cleaned. And they had to get a building permit for that. There's one that's been asked, uh, somebody changed their door. And they were asked to get a permit. My niece, of course, would ask you to permit for a doorknob once. So it's very confusing. I've read the ordinance. They don't make sense compared to the application that you have. Where it says you need a permit for grass cutting, painting, carpet cleaning, but you're referencing the building permit ordinance?
Grass cutting, grass cutting companies.
Yeah.
It had nothing to do with individuals.
Carpet cleaning is companies.
I mean.
You clean your own.
I'll be honest with you, those were actually uploaded on Facebook back in twenty twenty-one. So I can go back and I can look at every day that the Facebook page, or I'm sorry, the website was actually updated two weeks, which I did. Um, back in May of twenty twenty-one is when those were actually uploaded into the Face, or the website. I didn't run it then.
No, I did, yeah. Because this is what I was given. Or have they changed? Because this is actually the ones that was copied in November.
Well, the, the, um, Lynn said that the, um, application of the form is actually the wrong one.
So there's another form?
The only carpet cleaning and the only grass cutting form that is needed for is for companies who come in to actually do it. So if Stanley Steamer comes in to clean carpets, then a permit is needed.
Under what ordinance?
Not if you do or if I do.
Under what ordinance?
Not be under the B and O ordinance.
For Stanley Steamer, not for the customers.
Yeah, not for the customers, for Stanley Ste.
And what about, like, when they're changing their doors or doorknobs, that kind of stuff? They don't need it? Because that's where we need clarification.
Changing the doors, if it's a company?
No, if they're doing it themselves.
If it's doors themselves.
Because I know somebody at least.
If you come in and file a B and O, or come in and file a, uh, building permit for anything from zero to, what, three hundred bucks?
Yeah, that's what it says.
It's no charge.
Mm-hmm.
All you're doing is letting us know that you're putting in a new door.
Yeah.
Who wants that information is the assessor's office. Because that's how they increase taxes on property. So they get all of our building permits and everything every year. And we submit that to the assessor's office. And that way they know if you put a ten thousand dollar kitchen in or a five hundred dollar door or whatever, so that they know that they can go in and use that information to raise your house tax.
Yeah. Nobody wants to do that.
Well, surely don't.
But it's, if you, you're saying you still need a permit, even if it's three hundred and below, you still need to have a permit put in here?
But you don't charge, if you're not charged.
Yeah, you're still not getting charged, but you still need to come in to get a permit.
We have people that come in and get everything.
I've got one of my friend doing it right now because I'm actually filling in my slow.
But you don't have to pay anything for it.
Didn't pay a penny for it.
Well, they said that company, the assessor's office, they're wanting all that information.
Assessor's office wants every bit of it because that's how they value your taxes.
Yeah. And like the B and A types for the companies. I mean, like, if you had something done and you had a company come in, you wouldn't have to pay anything. They would have to pay it.
Okay, when you're talking about that, what's the difference between somebody cleaning your carpets and a repairman coming in to fix something? Or if you buy a refrigerator from Lowe's? See, that's the difference. Nobody, there's, there's, it's just too open. Nobody understands it. So they're all confused about where you're cutting off, what you need a permit for, what you don't.
The, the best thing you can tell them is to call the clerks and let them, you know, look at it and see what needs to be done.
So the clerk can tell them if they're gonna need.
If you're hiring a company to come into your location to do work, then you need a work permit. They need a permit. These people, yeah, these people need to come in and voice their own complaints. It's not set up for someone to come in and, and represent complaints for somebody else.
Well, it's.
I don't.
Man, anything else?
No.
Okay.
Does that make sense if you're paying a company to come in to work?
No, because you're doing the same thing for Lowe's when you buy a refrigerator. You're paying your mom to come in and hook it up.
You paid your tax, six percent tax.
And you don't have to get a permit.
That's, that's not true. They're not doing work. You're buying something.
Yeah, and they're delivering.
Repairman.
Thirty-five years, that, that, that doesn't work out.
You're just putting a new appliance in your house?
Yeah.
Or a repairman coming to fix your.
A repairman?
If you're paying a repairman.
If you're paying a repairman. Yeah, if you're paying a repairman, he should be coming and getting them.
We don't, we don't know who these people are.
Anything else? Joe, have you anything? Nothing? Okay. All right, and the next thing we'll do is, uh, we need a motion to go into an executive session. So we have a motion. Motion, who? Jacob? Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second? I, I don't know. It, it, it may be a little while. You, you make the second, Michael, can I say to Michael? Any, any questions or anything? If not, all those in favor, say five, say aye. Any opposed, like a say? Any opposed, like, same, so... All right. We ask for everyone to leave. We're out of executive sessions. Uh, not that, no motions were made or anything in executive session, so we'll go ahead and start. First thing is, uh, we had the application for Bailey Clark White. Uh, what's the pleasure of the council?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to hire Bailey.
Okay, on part-time basis?
Yeah, part-time basis at twelve dollars an hour.
Uh, twelve dollars an hour, okay. We have second, second by Melanie. All those in favor, say five, say nine. And another personnel issue, uh, somebody will make a motion about writing an letter.
So moved.
So moved, okay. Do we have a second? Second by Melanie. All those in favor, say five, say nine? Any opposed, like, same? Motion to adjourn.
So moved motion.
Okay, motion by Michael, second by Jacob. All those in favor, say five, say nine? Thank you all very much.